It's seven o'clock, Congress. We'll deal with the September sixteenth. We haven't had a meeting since September sixteenth.
I know, it's hard to watch. Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, do you, because Peter isn't here, do you have to appoint Donald tonight?
No.
Before she votes?
She's gonna be, she's gonna sit on this decision.
For everything.
So it feels like if Donald, if you don't appoint him, he's sitting on the floor tonight. Any questions on the votes?
I think we're richer than the town.
Any questions on the votes? Lisa has asked me to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, fun.
Not for a month.
After twenty years, jolly, it's just.
You've been in the south. Probably in the south. It's just a, it's just a lot.
Okay. It was signed with rules. Oh, it is. This is being watched or basically changed. Changed. She was back before several times. As June ticket.
Since 2004.
I know. I think in the last one we touched on this. Effective eight one sixties. So it's been, and that, that was basically what we got except for final revisions.
The revision is what is effective.
Today.
James paid by way of two. This is five.
It is five.
It is five. Got some crush on it. Okay. I don't know if anybody's coming to the next hearing. So I will introduce myself.
No, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we have to vote. Rules to separate.
Oh. Any questions on this?
No.
No.
Glad to have them complete. Glad to have them completed. An early year of business.
Okay. All those favorables.
I move that we accept the rule as submitted.
I second it.
Okay.
All favorables?
Aye.
That was quick.
Good.
Okay. I'm going to recuse myself. And. Boss, would you? Back to chair.
Sure.
I can sit here or you?
It's up to you.
It's up to you.
Wherever you like, it's up to you. Yeah, you're the chair.
You want to get a better picture of you?
Yeah. That's what I want.
The public hearing for case number seventeen point oh five, for an application received from Mr. Donald Thurston requesting a special permit to the zoning board to restore the front steps/ portico is now open. This public hearing will proceed in an orderly fashion. I ask for cooperation in following procedure. Everyone present will be given an opportunity to be heard after the applications presented to the board. Members have asked questions. The secretary will be recording what is said. Therefore, when you address the board, begin by stating your name and address. Speak slowly and clearly. Only one person will be allowed to speak at a time. Do any members of the board have an interest in this property or in the issue or stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this hearing?
No.
The public notice for this application was posted at the Town Hall, sent to a certified list of parties in interest, and was published in a town comment on April fifth, 2017, and April twelfth, 2017, and reads as follows. Case seventeen point oh five. A public hearing will be held at Town Hall Annex, thirty-nine Central Street, on Thursday, April twenty, 2017, at seven fifteen PM to act on an application received March twenty-second, 2017, from Mr. Donald Thurston. Applicants requesting a special permit from the Board of Dealers to restore front steps portico. Property is located at two three seven Main Street, Raleigh, Mass. Property is in the Central District and is shown on Assessors' Map twenty-six, block twenty-eight. At the public hearing, members of the public may ask questions and present evidence that supports either approval or denial of this petition. The purpose of this hearing is for the board to hear and consider the pertinent facts relating to the application and to approve with any conditions or deny. Before hearing from the public, the applicant will be allowed to present their case, and then board members will be allowed to ask questions or comment. The applicant now has the floor.
I went to the building inspector, and he told me that I had to come to this board because what I'm doing is, it is not a repair. I have put steps on them presently, and they have deteriorated, and I have to take them out because I have a bonded sill on the front floor. I wanted to repair that. I've got to let the steps out. Decided that I'm going to replace it with wood and the host materials as approved by the Raleigh Historic Commission. I've got a picture here showing you my house back in nineteen ninety. Look at this there. It is a little bit of a loss, see, but.
Wow.
It's morning.
Great picture.
What a beauty.
And you can see straight through the Broad Street Farm. Is that Broad Street Farm house a little? Wow.
Now, the reason Ken told me I had to come here because I'm approaching a fifty-foot setback. And because of what I'm doing, declassifies it as new construction.
Okay.
And so that's going to. You have a top plan shows my houses between fourteen and sixteen feet from property line in front. Also, it's a diaphragm of the proposed to. It's going to be basically the same footprint. It's not going to be changing. The total footprint right now is five feet, seven feet wide and eight feet long.
You made it.
Thank you.
Please press this out, it's going to be a huge building on the porch.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, ask it.
So as I understand it, the only real problem is the fact that since the zoning bylaw was instituted, you are now going to be a little closer to the front line.
No, I won't be any closer to it. I won't be as close to it.
You're just, you're just within. You're just within a setback.
Yeah, no, there's a setback. There's a setback issue.
I thought it was the same dimension.
No, I don't think it is the same dimension.
What is it that? It's new construction. The bylaw states reconstruct aspect of the cement of the zone portico. For. Four one three one.
Five four two. Six one three one.
Five four two, it must be.
Five four two is the setback.
Six four three one.
Which establishes the setback.
I thought that's what we're talking about, is the setback is not changed.
No.
No.
It's just that he's within the setback.
I'm glad for it, as far as the setback is concerned.
Okay.
All right. Of course, my house is. It's not going to come any closer to the street than what I've already got.
The house isn't.
The house isn't.
Okay.
Okay.
And neither of the stairs.
Neither, neither is the steps in the portico. All I'm doing is taking the brick out and replacing it with wood construction. And because I'm changing it from brick to wood, the building inspector says that's new construction. I have to go to the zoning board to do this. So.
And it's, and it's right on the same footprint, is what you got.
Yes.
The drawing, the sketch in the drawing has already been approved by the Historic Commission. It's a Historic District.
Yep.
We have a letter dated April four, 2017, from the Board of Selectmen. The Selectmen review the special permit application submitted by Donald Thurston to restore the front steps portico at two thirty-seven Main Street. They have no comments. We have a memo from the Board of Health. The Health Department has reviewed the provided application plan. There are no comments or concerns. We have a letter dated March thirty, 2017, from the Fire Department. The Fire Department has no wishes for this application. Please do not hesitate to contact me. The Planning Board has submitted a memo either through the information packet or ZBAC seventeen point oh five, and determined there are no planning board issues to consider. The Raleigh Historic District Commission has issued a letter. The RHDC has approved the design of following materials for its proposed front steps portico. Two, two thirty-seven Main Street. No work stipulations on its products. I think that concludes the evidence, unless you have something else, Mr. Thurston. Anybody else want to be heard? Questions by the members?
I'm fine. Make the motion when the chapter is presented.
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When do you see the conditions I put on that decision? Good job.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Public hearing, case number seventeen oh six, an application received from the Radiant Associates Incorporated on behalf of four twenty, newly bought and acquired LLC. Appealing the building inspector by building's decision. This public hearing will proceed in an orderly fashion. I ask that all persons follow procedure. Everyone present will be given an opportunity to be heard without the application listed yet, and the board members have asked questions. The secretary will be recording what is said. Therefore, when you address the board, begin by stating your name and address. Speak slowly and clearly. Only one person will be allowed to speak in a time. Any board members have any comments? Conflicted with this request?
No.
Public notice of this application is posted at Town Hall, executive certified listing of parties in interest. It was posted at Town Hall, May third, 2017, and ten, 2017, reasons as follows. Case number seventeen oh six, filed through the Town Hall Annex, thirty-nine Central Street, on Thursday, May eighteenth, 2017, at seven thirty PM. Application received, April twenty-four, 2017, from Radiant Associates Incorporated on behalf of four twenty newly bought and acquired LLC, Raleigh, Mass, one nine six nine. The applicant is appealing the decision from the building inspector's board as due into the RPBL six point five, specifically six five point one. Six point one. Specifically, six point five point one point four. Applicant is proposing to construct a new building to be attached to an existing building to house HVA C, making the total height to forty feet and accessory without attaching to it five feet. Property is located in four twenty newly bought and acquired LLC. The property is in this, this left industry district. It is shown itself as a property to block three seven. As public hearing, members of the public may ask questions if there's any evidence that supports the area treatment on this condition. Purpose of this hearing is for the board to hear and consider the pertinent facts related to the application and will prove new conditions for denial. Before hearing from the public, the application will be allowed to present its case, and board members will be allowed to ask questions. This is a letter from Radiant Associates. Yet board members, the letter along with supporting materials was submitted on behalf of four twenty newly bought and acquired LLC. We are appealing the decision made by Ken Gordon, the board inspector. Ward, the inspector of buildings. The applicant is proposing to construct a new building, number four, to be attached to the existing building, number three. And the part of this proposed building will feature the Tiana Cove penthouse, to house HVAC and other chemical equipment, which will make company level of the building, giving the total building height to forty feet, in excess and without tanks and thirty five feet. And this the board's opinion section, six point five point two point four. The general comments, the overall views of the case. You would see maximum height of the building, within that vicinity. The board agrees with this with words of interpretation. The applicant will be opposed to the appearance of the height objection. The submitted file is entitled, Building Four, Proposed Elevations Prepared by Wesley Pacatels, an Old World Parkway Compared to this Office, and Two Primary Drawings of this package. The additional permit, the second, appeared by the service, as well as four plans prepared by the Porsche Rangers, Pacatels. Serve as supporting documents for your consideration and report to the discussing services if you can, and slip your comments. Okay, this time let me call on the applicant. Is that the case?
Good evening. Jim Cresser, Attorney in Hamilton, I'm representing Sandy Patrickin, Brian Patrickin, and I have Ego Ferrara from Meridian with me, with a more legible copy of the planned building. And if I can point it out to you, this is really an addition to an existing building. So what is proposed is a forty thousand square foot building, approximately this footprint, that will be an addition to an existing building. The building itself is under the thirty five foot height limit. The mechanical room that will sit on top of the building is five feet above the thirty five foot height limit, and that's the basis of our problem. So the building inspector, Mr. Ward, and you all have a copy of it, issued a letter basically taking the position that if any portion of the structure is habitable, then all of the building has to meet the thirty five foot height requirement. I think that's, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but I think he was being cautious, maybe for my client's sake. I think the bylaw was intended to address particular portions of the structure and not to encompass the entire building. And if you, if you look at the provision that we're, that we're talking about, six point five point one 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 says the height of any structure in all districts shall not exceed thirty five feet or two and a half stories. Six point five point one point two says building height shall be measured at the vert, as the vertical distance from the average elevations of the existing lot grade at the front of the building to the highest point of the top story in the case of a flat roof, and to the mean height between the plate and the ridge in the case of a pitch roof. The, the section that is hanging us up is six point five point one point four, which says limitations of height shall not apply to flagpoles, chimneys, radio and television antenna, windmills, silos, water tanks, public utility structures, and similar non-inhabitable structures. And I guess my example in support of why we think a building permit should be issued here is if you focus just on the chimney, if someone wants to build a house with a chimney that's a couple of feet above the thirty five foot limit, this provision allows chimneys to be above thirty five feet. If you take the building inspector's position, it couldn't be attached to a habitable structure. And we looked at this and thought, well, where would you build, why would anyone build a chimney that wasn't attached to something habitable, a house or a commercial, industrial building? I just think he's, I don't think the section of the bylaw is the clearest thing in the world, but I think he's making a really restrictive interpretation of that. And I think chimneys is the perfect example for it. This section right here, which is five feet above your thirty five foot height limit.
How, how points a square foot, Julie?
Well, the building's forty thousand, so that's probably twenty five percent of it.
The penthouse is ten thousand square.
Ten thousand square feet. So it's twenty five percent of the overall building, five feet of which, of course, is above your thirty five foot limit. There's nothing in that, other than mechanical equipment. There's no access to it, other than by tradespeople, workers. And the fact that the rest of the building is occupied is a fact, but it's a fact that I don't think should be taken into account when you're making that type of determination. And to do anything other than this.
Okay.
We, we get into this in part two, I guess, but.
What is the exact purpose of that?
Sandy, you want to take that one?
Do you have a layout of the mechanical equipment? What's going in there?
No, I think the best way to describe it is it's going to look like the boiler room of a battleship, from what we can see.
Is it going to look like the existing Bio Labs mechanical penthouses?
Yes.
Similar to that?
Yeah. Y'all familiar with the ones in Ipswich?
Yes.
Well, this is the same sort of thing. They're fitting out a building on our property now. And there's a great deal of mechanical equipment inside the building. What they want to do is increase the amount of equipment. And they'd like it enclosed, so that they can service the equipment in winter, and it will be more sightless. Not that it's, the sightlines are a big thing, because nobody other than people in the park are really ever going to see it. It's at the very back northwest corner of the park, and the only thing it overlooks is the old Girl Scout camp in the land that we donated to the town.
So they're like large, hundred percent outside air units, is that what's going to do?
Yes, yes.
Or the chiller kind of equipment?
Yes, exactly. Would be, the best way I could describe it's chills. That answer your question?
Sandy, do we want to say? My name's Brian Patrickin, Sandy's my father. I don't know what the exact configuration is of the ones in Ipswich that you're exactly referring to, because it's a much larger campus. But if you've seen our buildings, the exterior panel that we have, that will be on the thirty five feet, the glass curtain walls, that is going to be what will be similar for the mechanical penthouse, so it'll just look like it's the same building, just a little bit taller in that, in that small portion.
Not unlike Bio Labs in Ipswich.
What I was getting at was, is there going to be room to have an office or anything in there?
No.
Or is it going to be pretty full with mechanical?
Yeah, it's just, it's just for mechanical, mechanicals, no heat, no ventilation, or no air conditioning. I think there'll probably be plenty of heat generated by the equipment.
The difference with this one versus building six, which is where they're fitting out now, is that when they took that building, that building was already built and existing, and they had said, if we could have done this, we would, where this one can be built to their specifications, that's why they're requesting, so that they can maximize the usage of the building.
And there really isn't a lot of extra room on the site for putting all this stuff on the ground without using up a lot of valuable parking spaces. Did you need planning board approval for this?
Yes.
You got it?
Yeah.
They did.
I, I, can I address, I'm, I'm sort of curious, that was one element that I'm struck by, is that this whole process had to go, was vetted by the planning board.
Yes.
Last fall.
Yes.
And did this subject of height come up?
No, because we didn't have tenant at that time. It's almost, it's almost.
So that, so was, was this el, well, that's, that may be relevant. So this was approved without this superstructure that's going to be on the top.
Yes.
Being part of the plan.
Yes.
So that happened after the fact.
Yes.
So every approval was based upon a flat roof at thirty five feet or thereabouts.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Because I'm, I was amazed that the planning board had to wait three, four months from their approval to come before us with it, because it would have hung you up.
Bio Labs is a wonderful tenant, but they don't always make decisions in the timeframe that we would prefer.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
What's, what's this, we have a, what are the dimensions of the room?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Dimensions, I, I. Hundred feet square, I believe.
Yeah.
In the technical room.
It's ten, it's.
Ten by ten?
Yeah. It's. Ten thousand square.
Hundred by hundreds of thousands, it's ten thousand square.
Okay, I got a letter here from the planning board.
Oh, ten by ten.
It's on the reader. Uh, this is from Kurt Baker.
Wait until the town plan out.
I reviewed the information packet from ZBA case number seventeen point oh six pertaining to repeal of the town building official determination regarding the application picked up. It is only by law, height requirements specified in section six point five point one point four, that the proposed mechanical penthouse requested by the applicant does not constitute a similar non-habitable structure, and is therefore not considered eligible for exemption from the thirty five foot height limitation plan. Be advised, the planning board approved special permit modification for the proposed building associated with this request on January eleventh, two thousand seventeen, which was attached to the ZBA's review packet. In regards to the ZBA request, I would offer that the applicant's assertion that the mechanical penthouse area is non-habitable is reasonable, and that our sensors spaces for mechanical equipment are not intended to be spaces where workers conduct business activities associated with proposed business-like industry, industrial uses. However, in support of the building inspector's determination, I must agree that the proposed mechanical area does not constitute a similar non-habitable structure. Compared to the use as specified in section six point five point one point four, I will note that the proposed mechanical space difference from flagpoles to these radio intelligent windmills, silos, water tanks, and other public utility structures, and that these fixtures are very, have very specialized functions, which the height is necessary for proper operation, used to which they are accessible. For example, radio, television, antenna, cell towers, and the light may need height to receive and send clear transmissions. Flagpoles need height so they be visible to the public view. Windows so as to maximize wind energy input. Water tanks so as to utilize gravity in order to achieve maximum water pressure. As to proposed mechanical room, the application only indicates the space as currently built is insufficient for the inspector's tenant, and that the space allocated should supersede this own plan. Moreover, the use of site in section six point five point one point four are often associated with public utilities that distribute the public grid which benefit citizens and watch. Yet the applicant is proposing that the exemption may be fit to specific tenant's space needs. However, doing so would need to begin contributing zoning by law requirements with a more inclusive notion of what constitutes similar non-habitable space. In this situation, the ZBA should be cautious to avoid setting any precedent for exemption with the zoning height requirement, and will benefit from the assumption that future applicants will seek the same exemption to be applied to buildings and unjust structures whose function necessitates greater height. If the ZBA does approve the application as here, the applicant should be advised that they will need to make a formal request with the planning board to determine the proposed change to the building height, which constitutes a significant modification to a special modification or modification to be handled as a field correction. Thank you, we are to this application, that's the plan. The health department has reviewed the required application plan. An existing subject system is replaced, going from a review of this property contract, there will be no flow associated with the general, with all comments of concern. Selecting to review the application for its own ZBA registration, unfortunately, due to the turnpike, they do not have any comments. Had to review the application, while I write, I have no concerns about the application request. If you have any question for changing the policy position of this request, please do not hesitate to take the floor. To Sandy, Patricia, champ board, building inspector, dated four ten, two thousand seventeen. Dear Sandy, you will ask for my opinion regarding height limitations in the zoning bylaws. The word in section six point five shall be required, specifically section six point five point one point four. Despite the need to exceed current height requirement, it's pertinent to request that the chemicals be allowed in non-habitable space, both habitable and space. Furthermore, in this my opinion, the bylaw requires only non-habitable structures, not combination of both habitable and non-habitable. a combination of both habitable and non-habitable. I trust this exception to the search.
No, that's important. If you didn't put a roof on this, it wouldn't matter. More different information, you end up with stuff on a roof. I mean, why, why did it have to be, I know you like to work on it in the wintertime, but I mean, you have all kind of rooftop stuff that is made out for the elements and you work on it.
Bio Labs does things-
I know that, I'm the inspector and just the colleagues, I know by law, by law. I know that-
Hey, this is-
But, I mean, this is, I mean, you're putting us in a, in a situation here that's, you know, like I say, if there's no cover, then you can, you know, do whatever. And, and now your, your hawken is all in the front.
Yes.
Why couldn't you go in the back part of the building, three, they're little further over if you had to, and put it there too, I mean, they had to have it enclosed. Well, I know it's, well, cost probably in that way.
We, we use that as outside storage for, for research-based operation. And also directly behind the building is where the septic system is. And the septic system is quite large because it-
Services on the building.
Uh, well, three of the buildings.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, can I, I have a couple of comments. I, firstly, I, I agree with the building inspector's interpretation of the bylaw. I think the intent of the bylaw is to protect structures. But I also agree with you that the bylaw is vague and not well written. I don't personally view this as a habitable, non-habitable issue at all. I, I view it purely as a height issue. I think that's, that's what Ken is responding to, and our board has, has consistently asked him to be cautious about granting any permit that would potentially be found as a violation of his own bylaw. So, by default, if Ken questions an issue, he refers it to us for us to interpret the bylaw, which is what we're doing. Where the bylaw is not clear, it leaves it in my mind in a gray area. In terms of the building and the specific use of that space, I mean, the building, the planning department does point out that this is not a public issue, it's a personal issue. You've got a tenant who needs space, it's cost effective for you to build this up there on the roof, more so than it is to try to place it anywhere else on the prime. And I get that too. I mean, it's, it's certainly got to be cheaper to just reinforce whatever weight you have to support back there, but that's fine. I'm, I visited the site, I know your site, this is on the rear of the building, it's probably barely visible from the front of the building. The back of the building is, faces openly, and nobody's back there anyhow. As far as I'm concerned, you're a good commercial res, uh, business in the town, you build nice properties. The purpose of this board, in my opinion, is to look at situations and where situations end up being non-conforming, if possible, grant special permits in order to allow for those things to occur. We do that all the time, whether it's a sidewalk, whether it's a deck, you know, whether it's the placement of a driveway. And going back to this, you're only, you know, it's the rear of the building, you're only incurring five extra feet of space. I don't, I don't have a problem with, with the proposal as you have it, I don't have a problem with what you want to do. I don't think it's detrimental to the community, I don't think it's detrimental to the environment. If so permitted, it's a, it's a special provision, it's not something that sets a precedent as a default action that can, that any other applicant in the future can assume they're going to get, because we look at every case, we might look at another case where it would be different. The definition in the bylaw about where the height of your roof actually is on a flat roof, I'm assuming based upon what you have here, that, that mean height in front of the building puts you up a few feet higher than, than where you're indicating the top of the second story is, because you've got an extra buffer height here, which you don't seem to fully need. So, as, as long as that information is consistent with what you're telling us, I, you know, five feet an incursion here, it is an incursion. If it was right on Route one and it was the whole building, you wanted for the whole floor and it was facing, I don't think we would be in a position to approve that kind of thing. But I don't have a problem with it, I really don't. I see it purely as a height issue. And I, I think, I think under the, to, to look at twenty-five percent of the total structure, in the rear of the structure, where there's no other visual impact to any other abutting residents or businesses, I think it's, I, I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm afraid I have to take, I'm afraid I disagree with, with Tom. Non-inhabitable means it can't be inhabited, not that it won't be by design. This is something that could be inhabited, okay? If you look at the exceptions, flagpoles, chimneys, radio and television antenna, windmills, silos, water tanks, those cannot be inhabited. This room, twelve hundred square feet, clearly could be, could be inhabited. It's not non-inhabitable. By design, it's not meant to be, because they're not going to use it that way, but it could be inhabitable. And it's part of the structure. And our oath is to uphold the bylaw, and I, I couldn't go for this.
My, my rebut would simply be that while the, whether it's twelve hundred or a thousand or six hundred or, or two thousand, you're right, it could become an inhabitable environment. But I think, I think that we could put constraints on it which would limit its use, so that that would be considered a violation to convert at any point in time which could, which would elicit a cease and desist order from the building inspector. And if, if I understand what you're talking about doing up there is you're, in a not, in layman's terms, is you're putting all the HVA stuff, HVAC stuff upstairs.
Yes.
Roof. So, I, you know, to turn it into a habitable room, there, there, it'd be like you and I saying, you know what, we're taking all our furnace and a lot of plumbing out of our basement and somehow going to have to put it somewhere else, take care of the house. It'd be a major disruption of the structure.
It's part of the structure, it's not separate from the rest of the structure.
I, I don't, I, I don't, it's not an internally heated, plumbed, or wired structure. As I understand, there's probably just barely plumbing and electrical going to it. There's no, and, and it's, it's, it's almost like a shed, except it's up on the roof.
Part of the same building.
It's on top of the building.
It's not a different building, it's part of the same building.
Well, that's fine, but is it accessible to the internal part of that building?
It's habitable. Non-inhabitable means cannot be inhabited.
It's not they're going to get into it.
This could be.
Are you going, how's the access?
The access is from inside.
It's from the inside of the building?
They don't want to go outside.
The whole idea is that the equipment is there, it's very sophisticated, it's way beyond a typical HVAC rooftop unit.
Sure.
And requires regular maintenance.
Right.
And what they're looking to do is to make it as safe as possible for the people that need to go up there periodically to service the equipment.
Sure.
The, if you could take a walk through building six being outfitted now and see the maze of pipes and so forth, that it go, that's going into it.
It's unbelievable.
It, it is really unbelievable.
It is. Like a-
So, it's, it's serving laboratory space, it's a lab. And the HVAC equipment is, is complex, and I don't see the space as inhabitable. I, I mean, I've built many of these kind of mechanical rooms.
Our whole premise is that it's non-inhabitable, and any type of condition you want to impose to that effect is fine, because that's what it's going to be, it's going to be a mechanical room, and that would cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars to pull that stuff out of there, for the sake of doing what I don't know.
I think that's the, the question, and the future could be inhabitable, but you'd have to pull all that equipment out, and if this wouldn't be worthwhile.
May I? It's also very easy for us to restrict this, okay, with, with the provision of the lease. So, if there's a provision for that, if hypothetically this was approved, we can just make that contingent of the lease, okay, which gives us more teeth, should there ever be an issue. We don't anticipate there would be, but if that would make the board feel better, we can guarantee that that would be included in the final lease document.
Is the tenant responsible for maintenance of this stuff?
Yes. Most of it process equipment, yeah.
But the-
But anything we do goes to the owner of the tenant.
I mean, my suggestion was that you condition it on it being permanently uninhabitable.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
End of sentence.
Right.
Because that's why we're here.
And we make that an attachment to the lease, as part of-
Well, you're-
A potential-
Your decision, though, gets recorded and runs with the law, it's not just for Bio Labs.
Right, right. It's there.
It's the point. I, I have to say, trying to take a room of this size and analogize it to a flagpole, chimney, antenna, windmill, it's not intended by law. That non-inhabitable means could never be, in my mind, and, I'm sorry, that's-
But that's what we're suggesting, that it never be inhabitable, and-
Right.
The last-
And everybody who comes before us who wants to say, hey, guess what, I want, I'm going to have a forty-foot singles, I'm going to have a single story, or a single house, but I'm going to have an attic, and it's going to be just an attic with a pitched roof, and it's going to be forty feet, but you know what, I'll guarantee that nobody will ever live up there because it's a pitched roof.
It already violates the bylaw.
That was exactly what I was going to say, it's not as though we're proposing to build a great room above a garage, but say, no, it's only for storage, no one will ever live there. It's a totally different animal, and the bylaw itself says public use, utility structures and similar non-inhabitable structures, that's, that's what it is.
It's a mechanical room, so there's stuff work and type game.
I do get your point, but I, I, you know, I-
It's amazing.
As it says, it's a non, similarly non-inhabitable, I, I-
Okay, so take a single-family house that somebody wants to put up with an attic and says, hey, the top five feet of my house, you know, it's an attic, I, I can't inhabit it, you know, from now on, everybody gets a forty-foot house in Raleigh.
But that, that doesn't fall within your bylaw provision.
Yeah, it does.
It, it doesn't.
Because you're saying it's non-inhabitable, because it's an attic now, and-
I, I don't think, I don't think-
We're saying it's a utility structure that's non-inhabitable, we're not building a house, we're not building anything that could ever have. Sir, it says public utility structure. And similar non-inhabitable structures. It's, I mean, it's-
Right.
It's not the best written thing in the world, but-
Okay.
You know, and it's- Okay, I, to me, I think it's pretty clear what it means, and I, I'm thinking about single-family homes when somebody says, I want to go thirty-seven feet, I want to go thirty-eight feet, and it's a pitched roof, and all of a sudden thirty-five comes up to whatever they want to say, because they're not going to use their attic.
Doesn't-
You know, we've got a bylaw.
Well, well, okay, wait a minute. When you, when you, when you, if I may even respond, when you talk about that example, you're, you're-
That's fun, yeah.
Okay, you're, you, well, you're talking about residential housing.
Mm-hmm.
And as, as was pointed out here, and as our bylaws state, the measurement on flat roofs are to the point of the flat roof. When you look at a house, when you look at a residential property that doesn't have a flat roof, it takes into account an average mean point of the peak. This is a flat-roofed building.
Yeah.
So, in my mind, the actual height of this building is not this adjunct element of what's being put on top of it, whether you want to look at it as part of it or not. If it were the whole roof area they were looking to enclose, I would, it would be much easier for me to accept your definition of that hitting into that thirty-five-plus area. But it seems to me that what, what you have here is you've got a roof height at the flat level point that is well within the bylaw height, and the extension in a portion of the roof, not the entire roof, not even fifty percent of the roof, is, is going to protrude up into over a height level. And to me, I think we can condition the habitable use out of it. I think if they are prepared, we can even condition it so that we make it so that you have to put it in the lease. Not, not that it's just like, oh, by the way, I hope you remember to write it in the lease, but that it's actually, you know, there, it can be, you can be found in violation of this approval should that occur. And I, you know, I, I'm still backed to it not being a habitable issue, because the law is, I don't really know what, you're right, it's a flagpole, this is not like any of these things.
That's why they put definite flagpole, chimney, radio, you know, things that could never be inhabited.
No, I, exactly, but I, I don't think, and public inhabitable, I agree, it's like a pump house.
No, public utility.
No, public utility, that's like a pump house, right? You think, well, that's, no, it's over.
I don't think I'm going to change your mind, and I don't think you're going to change mine, so.
You won't. Right.
Let's, all right.
Could I ask a dumb question?
We're full of those.
You're a, I ask lots of them, you're a five-member board?
Yes.
And the members are one, two, three, four, five.
Right.
But it needs four to pass.
Under our rules, it'd need four to, that's the rule.
Can I say something?
I, I sympathize with your problem, but I am hesitant to allow a forty-foot extension. Thirty-five foot is in there for a reason. And, like, like what the planning board said in his letter, I would be very skeptical of granting this, because it could open up the general lines. I don't know, I agree with you.
You know, I, I know, you know, bylaws are big, I mean, they're like in another projected world or something, the equipment they have up there, but you go back to make an exception here, and then, you know, the cat wants to something else. I know you people, I'm, I sympathize with you, trying to take care of your tenant.
Most of the equipment-
If the planning board agreed to it, I would, I would behave, better agree to it. I don't think we should.
You've got a good issue there, right?
We, we have to go back there anyhow, yes. Okay. They'd have to go back and modify their site plan with special permits to the planning board, so that's, that's a separate hurdle. You know, you're, you're the board that has jurisdiction over what we're asking for, which is first to overturn the building inspector, or second to give us a variance for what we're looking to do. And if you do, you know, getting the sense that you don't want to overrule your building inspector, so maybe we talk about a dimensional variance now, because that's the alternative that we've asked for. But in either case, they've got to go back, because they didn't have a building per se to bring to the planning board, they had a footprint, I suspect, and they'll, they'll have to, they'll, it's not, it isn't a minor modification, to my way of thinking, and even if it was, they would still be back there looking to have that sort of-
looking to have that sort of... But the height issue is for you, really, not for the planning board.
I know, I know you people are great people. You've gone a lot through town and everything else. And I know that, all of it.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps we should vote on the first part of the application because it's a two-part application. So they know where they stand on that. You can preserve their appeal rights.
Okay.
I mean, unless you, but I mean, I think they have, it's a bifurcated appeal. It's an appeal plus an application for a variance. So I think we have to vote on both.
Did you, did you ever submit to the building inspector in writing your request for interpretation of the height? Because all I see is his response that sounds like, Sandy, I wanted to give you feedback to your application. Here's a problem.
I don't think I did in writing. I took a set of drawings down to review with him.
Right.
And that, this was, this is the outcome of it. I mean, I think of the building inspector as the gatekeeper. And this answers to the whether the penthouse could be inhabitable.
Right.
Well, you'd have to go back and get a building permit to change the use. It's not any different than turning an attic into a habitable space.
Right.
I mean, you need to go back and get a building permit. And there's the gatekeeper. I mean, I don't think we can guarantee that somebody is not going to do something illegal.
Right.
But the magnitude of this mechanical penthouse just doesn't lend itself to that sort of situation.
Yeah, no, I was looking for the, a paper trail issue because I...
Well, I know, but you don't want to make them go back. You don't want to start a war.
No, 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 no. Well, they're going to have to go back. If we do not pass it, they got to go back to them and...
Unless they get a variance. They've got to go to the second part first.
They're already, we know the building department's already skeptical. So they're probably...
Well, then perhaps the planning board.
Well, I'm saying the planning board. I'm sorry. I meant to say the planning board. Ken won't do anything until he's fairly confident that either we have approved it and then ultimately they approve it. Because they're going to have to go back regardless. And if they have to go back to them with, you know, both of the decline, if we don't, if we uphold Ken, and my position on Ken is that it's not real clear. He didn't really make a decision. He offered an opinion, is the way I see it.
I think he said they had a... Well, what happened, just for background, is when Sandy and I talked about this first, I said to him, you'll have to get a formal letter from the building inspector in order to be able to appeal his decision. And I still... Yeah. And I still think there's plenty of room to interpret this provision differently than you folks appear to. But I'm the one who told him, just, he's got to give you something in writing or we don't have an appeal to base coming to you for. So perhaps that's where his letter came from. And I'm happy to talk about a variance if you're inclined to have that conversation with us. Because that's...
Well, what you said in your application is if we do not overturn the building inspector, then you would like us to consider a variance.
And I agree, you need to vote out.
And I think we have to vote on whether or not we overturn the building inspector's decision first.
Right.
Because if we don't, we don't need to get to the second.
Wait, right, exactly.
So maybe this is... I'm sorry.
Would it be smart to withdraw and go to the planning board?
I mean, he has a right to have his application for a variance heard.
The planning board can't help us with the height.
They're going to just send us back here again in a second.
What I was going to ask you, which is probably not kosher, but if you're going to vote down our request to overturn the building inspector, which it seems like you're going to, yes, we could ask to withdraw without prejudice. But I guess I get the sense that you're trying to help us. And if you're in any sense favorably inclined to give us a variance, we don't care which way it happens. We just want to be able to do what we can do there. I think there's a...
I don't, yeah, I can't give you that false, only from one vote. I can't say I...
I'm going to talk you into it. Or I'm going to try.
You want that?
Well, can I say something?
Yes.
You know, this is, it really all comes back to habitable, uninhabitable. I mean, what are the planning board's concerns going to be? Going to be the same as when we went through the first site plan review? Parking, septic issues, and things like that, which is what they're looking at. So this being uninhabitable eliminates all of the planning board's issues other than the site line issues, I think. I mean, most of this mechanical equipment could sit up there on the roof as long as it didn't have a roof on top of it.
Right, right.
All right? And all we're talking about doing is putting a roof on top of it to make it easier for the tenant to maintain his equipment, make it safer for the tenant to maintain his equipment. And...
Wouldn't it help if we knew what the equipment was?
Well, but I think the precedent is, look, you've got an enclosed structure. You've got walls, you've got a roof, and it's part of the other structure. And it's accessible from the inside. That's potentially, easily potentially habitable.
How about a canopy? That'd be protecting the roof.
Well, they're looking to protect the people, not necessarily the equipment, but just to protect it and to allow it to be serviced in the winter.
I understand that. I mean, we all work out in the winter.
But these aren't just roof trappings up there. These are complicated, large handling units that...
No, I don't agree with that.
And they could be anywhere. I mean, they have line around there. They have everybody else. They could be on the ground floor.
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Instead of taking a formal vote on the building inspector's issue, can we table that and talk about the variance?
If I can have a two-minute recess, we can.
Okay, with me.
Just want to give you some answers.
What do you think?
You want to take a recess?
Take a recess? Yeah, I'd like to. Take five.
Take five.
Okay.
We'll take a recess.
Okay.
Want to shut that off? We recess.
I'm going to follow you up.
It's like space stuff, I'm telling you. Everything is cleaned, the equipment. I had to make exceptions on the building in front. That they don't have enough room to work on things because it's... And, you know, I had to do it. You have to do it. You gotta kinda work with something here.
I know, but it's like... What's the point of having the bylaw then? Just say, "Well, do whatever makes sense."
Well, what's the point of having the zoning board of appeals too?
Yeah.
Kinda make exceptions. We can do like a special permit and put in that. Nobody can ever be in there.
Because we have guidelines that kinda indicate how we have to...
No, I agree. You're right. And Kenny's right too, but I think, you know, the times have changed and... I mean, if you've ever seen what's under this building and the other building next to it, you'd understand more.
I know, but the other side of that coin is like, I've heard people say, "Look, these are great people. They're doing good things, so let's give them whatever they want." And you can't do that.
That's true.
Well, I don't think these people look great, but we're gonna...
I wasn't meaning these people. I meant other people. And I've heard people say these are great people.
Too late. That wasn't even us, was it?
Wait, anything more?
I was drinking it.
Oh, my God.
So can we just forget about the building inspector for a minute? And let me ask you...
I don't have a problem with that.
For a dimensional variance? Because that's the unharder...
Okay, first of all, first of all, you don't qualify for a variance.
In the town of Rowley? You might end up switching to Oxford and where else?
The town of Rowley, yeah. Variance is very difficult to get. We could grant a special permit to allow that to happen.
Okay.
I mean, that would be my offer, a suggestion. It would be that, um... That we permit, it's a special permit. The variance in Rowley is a very restrictive form of what variances are. They're only grantable under very specific topographical conditions, which prevent an applicant from completing an element of their project in a particular way, such that without granting them that variance, there's no other possible way to do that. And I don't think you came prepared thinking you need to try to present that aspect of this project, or that it might even be an element of the variance. The common interpretation of a variance is, "We're gonna grant something that's not covered by the bylaw. It's not clear in the bylaw, so we're gonna, we're just gonna go ahead and grant it because we have the right to do that." The town of Rowley has not given this board that right. So we cannot, we would not grant a variance. However, we do have the full authority under a special permit to grant the right to approve certain variations based upon our interpretation of bylaw that are allowable, if necessary, under certain conditions. And in my personal opinion, your case falls well within that range to grant a permit that would allow for a very specific type of construction in a very specific place on that roof, under very certain conditions that would be restricted by leasehold elements that you would restrict in any tenant in that property, and that would basically get an agreement from you saying that it would, you would never do anything to, you know, inhabit it. I don't, I don't see it as a Pandora's box. Because the next person who comes up here, I may say, "I'm still doing this," which I just got appointed for five more years, so if you do another one, you'll still run into me again. The, it's a case-by-case basis. And I think, I think our board is here to make judgment calls. And I think Dave's point is, is right. I mean, you guys are doing stuff that I don't understand, but to me, I don't even need to, I don't need to be concerned. I'm looking at your building, looking at what you do, look at what I know you probably are gonna use this for. I'll make it difficult for anybody to have anything besides a pair of gloves on in that room when they're working up there. And if, and if it's ever identified as any other use, you'll have to get out of that room. You won't be able to maintain it. And I don't think you are gonna take that kind of risk. And I don't think the tenants either. I've been a commercial tenant myself, and I've had to have access. I've had people that I pay to have access to maintain this kind of stuff. And even though I don't build it, I mean, Donna has, but I know what you're doing up there. I know the kind of stuff that you gotta just think around. I've worked in power generation plants, and I know that it's unbelievable what was done.
It's just another special permit, I guess, then.
Well, that's my read. That's my read.
Similar to the planning board, too.
I mean, I think we have to, I think we have to uphold Ken's interpretation of the bylaw. I think his interpretation of the bylaw was accurate. There's an issue, there is a height issue, and that's basically what he said. You know, the habitable definition to me is so vague. It could mean exactly the ability to possibly make something inhabitable. It could be something that's clearly habitable. It could be something that's a canopy. What really is habitable? What do we really mean by it? It doesn't say that in our bylaw.
No, it says non-inhabitable, which means, if you look at it logically, it means it could not be. So that's a much higher, much higher standard for the applicant.
Well, that may be, but I still don't know what that word means. I, I don't really know what non-inhabitable is because I'm not sure of what that bylaw meant to me as habitable. So I'm prepared to say, "It's clear this is not inhabited, that there's no intent to inhabit." If you were gonna say, "Well, we want to put an extra 10,000 square feet..."
If you're suggesting that they come back under a different section of the bylaw, with a different request, with different standards, I have no problem. In considering that, certainly.
Well, that's fine, but they did apply...
But not under this application.
Well, they applied under both conditions here. If we can't get this, let's get that.
No, they applied under, they appealed the building inspector's decision, or they asked for a variance. I don't even know, I'm sure you're right, but I'm not... I don't have in front of me the section of the bylaw that you're talking about that would allow us to convert their application to a different application.
No, 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 no.
Would it help them know what's going in there?
No.
No. It doesn't make it up to me.
It doesn't make it up to me.
I don't care what it is. Where's the difference between the application?
If your determination is that our request can be handled as a special permit instead of variance, you have, you have the right to do that right on the spot.
I know that. But I'm not sure what Tom was referring to. In other words, I...
No, well, what Bob is referring to is, and this, this becomes also a technicality for us, is that we have a line item entry on our application, one of which says you can apply for a variance from the requirements of et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, or separate line item, special permit. And thirdly, is properly checked, as a party agreed by a building inspector's decision. Now, candidly, there have been more than one occasion where the assumption about what a variance is as opposed to a special permit is not clear. And it's incorrectly identified as this is the avenue to go. Because it's not clear what our variance can and cannot do. We do have the ability, I think we can, unless you don't want us to. Unless we have to act on this as what it... Because if it is, then I agree with you. We can't do the variance, and we're not gonna, well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna override Ken's reading of it, in which case the option is for them to reapply. Now, that's a time issue. For them to reapply thirty days out. As a special permit, under which we then...
If they're gonna, okay. But if they're gonna apply under a special permit, they've gotta tell us what section and what are the criteria. And I don't know.
Well, I don't, I don't have, you know...
I thought you had something in mind as far as a specific reference that could be somehow lend itself to an ad hoc amendment. But I don't think so.
No, I don't, I don't.
Well, look, I'll table...
It's a pure judgment call.
I'm happy to not throw down anything. I'm happy to table anything. I don't wanna cut off anybody's right to present anything they want to present. But this isn't about you and me, maybe?
No.
The chairmanship.
Right. No.
Let us know where he wants to go.
No, I don't.
Six, one, one, one.
I don't think frankly, I mean, I think your arguments are stated in letter under the two clauses you noted are, would be the same. I don't, I, you know...
With respect to the variance, your special permit, you mean?
No, no. There is a reasonable position to take, which Bob is taking, which is to say, you know, we could only act on the application as it's presented. You know, attorneys know that there are evidence that occurs that may affect a jury's decision, but the court says you can't think about it. In this particular case, you just have to look at what you have. And right here, we have two applications, and, you know, we can't really, two components of your application, and we can't really, you know, we can act on one, and I can't, we can't really act on the other. We can't grant you a variance as requested.
I would think...
Unless there's a way to...
Before you ask us to amend it to a special permit, you might well wanna consider the bylaw and craft your, craft your factual arguments to the specifics of the special permits.
They're not a whole lot different than the criteria in the variance section, to be honest with you.
I wouldn't find them personally a lot different.
I mean, we're talking, let's just talk in the abstract. We're talking about a 25-acre site that's virtually invisible to the general public. We're talking about a de minimis increase in the height of a portion of a building that's otherwise allowed as a matter of right, will be used as a matter of right for light industrial purposes. We're asking for a very minimum dimensional variance, which is a factor you're entitled to take into account when making your decision. We're not asking for 50 feet. We're asking for five. And there is a financial component to the variance statute that basically says if not granting the variance imposes a financial hardship on the applicant, that's a factor you can take into account. To do other than what we wanna do here means we're affecting parking. We have lots of wetlands on this property that are gonna have to be taken into account. Wetlands are soil conditions under 48, section 10, under the variance statute. They're, they're all good arguments, in my opinion, for a dimensional variance to allow that five-foot height increase. If you want it phrased as a special permit, I suppose I can do that, but the facts and the criteria...
Answer me a question.
Sure.
What's the height of that structure? What's the height inside? Of the penthouse, or whatever you wanna call it, mechanical? What's the height from the floor to the ceiling?
Around 10 to 12 feet?
So it's part of the structure below.
Well, it's going from 26 to 24.
Well, I mean, the 26 is basically 14 feet.
It's not lower.
13 to 13, to get two stories to get to the 26. I, to answer your question, I don't think, I don't think anybody knows yet.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can visualize.
I mean, I mean, the way I, the way I envision this space, looking at the building Ipswich, that we're actually very familiar with because we did the whole exterior of the building by company. And the one that's being constructed now, you've been in building six. I mean, it's like there's pathways between the equipment. I mean, there's, there's, they have exit signs. Which way to go in this, in this...
Don't turn around, you gotta go that way.
...equipment hallway to get out, to get in and out of the space. That's how, that's how restricted it is. I mean, the notion that someone's gonna convert it to something else, I mean, it just, it isn't, it isn't a reasonable thing. But it can be, it can be restricted. We have special permits. We must have a dozen of them from the planning board over the last 20 years. And there's all sorts of provisions in those special permits for everything that the planning board controls. We've never violated one of them. Deal's a deal.
Yeah, I see. To go to your question, if I may, the variance requires us to really make all kinds of justifications based upon hard evidence that there was a problem topographically with the land. And what you submitted to us by having gone to that planning board is that, "Here's a beautiful building. It's all set. We're all good to go. Do you like everything?" "Yep, yep, yep. Is everything right? Is parking good?" "Yup, yep, 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 yep." Everything the site off on. And then life changes because, as you say, you now have a tenant who appears, and you've got empty space, and you wanna modify that building. So now you're faced to have to make an adjustment with the building, even though you admitted upfront with the original application that there really was nothing wrong with the land, there was nothing wrong with the building, there was nothing wrong with the design. It just so happens, we've got a tenant whose application requires such that we need to give him space to do what he wants to do. So we gotta do this. So it would be much easier, in my opinion, to not try to go the variance route, which is harder for us to justify because we have to make all these points back to see, "Here was the problem. It was a problem of building the building over here, so they had to move it 25 feet, which put it in a setback, et cetera, et cetera." Much more open-ended under a special permit for us to say, "Okay, we'll grant the following under these very specific conditions, which could include a height limitation. Not an open-ended, "Here's, here's a 10,000-square-foot space, you know. We're gonna look for you to give us some input as to couldn't possibly be more than X because we're only gonna grant you X amount of feet." So if you turned around and some, your engineer said to you, "I need two more feet," you say, "I got a problem. Either you gotta find another way, or now I gotta go back and ask for more. They didn't like it in the first place." So, you know, we'll look to tie you in as tightly as we can, but we have much, much more easily open discretion in doing that under those conditions with a special permit that runs with the building.
Yep, and I understand the difficulties with variances and, you know...
At least in our town. If it were somewhere else and it was a dimensional variance, we could say, "Yeah."
Well, listen, if you're in Hamilton, you don't get variances. I've tried and failed. And frankly, I don't think that's right because that's not what the variance statute is for.
I agree.
The variance statute is to assist somebody with a unique problem that can't really be sorted out otherwise without costing lots of money or affecting the land. But I get your point. I mean, variances are difficult to get. If we were here for a use variance, my guess is we couldn't even ask for it. Because most of these towns don't allow your board to issue them. So I don't have any problem asking for a special permit. The facts will all be the same if your, if your pleasure is that that's what we come and ask you for.
Well, the question then goes to your point is, you know, since you haven't asked them now, do we wanna go through, is there a way to...
Yeah, it's gotta figure out. I mean, under the bylaw, it could be the, it could be the planning board, the board of field, the board of selectmen. So you gotta figure out which is the SPGA.
Well, I think, I think we're still dealing with the height issue. It's our issue. The height issue is always our issue. The planning, they could, they, they'll go back to the planning board.
They'll send us here.
They'll still say, "Go over there." Because Ken's always gonna send them here. It's our issue. The only issue is the height issue.
Well, no, it's not, it's not up to Ken.
No, no, no. Well, but Ken, well, yeah, Ken made the call and says, "I think it's..."
What are you looking at? Well, 7811 just says, "Certain classes of special permits may be issued by the granting authority, which will be the planning board, the board of appeals, the board of selectmen, as designated by the bylaw." And I was trying to find which one made it clear that it was us.
The bylaw has stated 7811.
Oh, that's...
I'd like to thank the board for its time. I have children that I need to go to, so...
One of us has an outdated birth date. Mine has 7811 as special permits. Here's a site plan review, so I don't know. There's got the outdated CPA. Yours on the bylaw. We've got 7811.
Yeah, like this. Absolutely.
I got this one. This one, 7811. But this is, these are the rules, not the... That's not the bylaws.
Certain classes of special permits may be issued by special...
Yeah, but he's got 7811 as site plan.
No, it's gotta be the same thing. General, certain classes of special permits. Now, the, the building...
I just wanna make sure we're the granting authority.
We've always been the granting here.
Yes, yeah.
You know, I'm kind of reluctant to do this on the fly, if I'm sure of it.
Yeah, but this, that is a...
Basically, it should be.
You know, in our next case, it's... The third, third engine. 15.
Well, we need to, we need to answer Bob's question. It's a valid one. Although we've acted, we've acted, and even, even the planning board refers the case in their comments saying... Well, we need to, we need to answer Bob's question. It's a valid one. Although we've acted, we've acted, and even, even the planning board refers the case in their comments saying...
No, I, I mean, I really didn't even mean it to be obstructive or anything, I just...
It's not, it's fair.
What, there's, there's four different potential authorities, and I don't, I was asking, since you brought it up, I thought, I thought you were gonna say, oh, well, that's easy, here's the authority for us.
That's it.
Okay, according to his application, he said he's applied for a variance under by 6.5, 1.1, 6.5, 4.1, 4. And we can't grant a variance. All right? There's a, and he's also got checked, there's a agreed decision from the building inspector. We can act on that. I'm gonna suggest if we act on that, we don't hold the building inspector's decision and have them reapply for a special permit.
I, I, I mean, I have no problem allowing them to reapply without prejudice. That wouldn't bother me.
Well, we...
In other words, deny one without prejudice to the other.
How about if we just not deny anything at this point? And I'd rather not withdraw without prejudice. I'd almost rather continue this hearing and allow us to modify our special permit, modify our application to the special permit, but if, if you want a new application for a special permit, that's what we'll give you.
As far as I'm concerned, if the, if the facts are essentially the same, and I guess they are, I would not oppose a continuance, I agree, with the request to amend.
And the only, the only, the only thing I'll say is I'm looking under Board of Appeals under administration, and again, it's not the clearest thing in the world, but it says in exercising its powers under section 7.1.2, that's the Board of Appeals and what they have jurisdiction over, the board shall act in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, chapter 48, section 9, which is the special permit statute.
Yeah, it's 7811 that I was confused by.
Page 51.
Here's the building height reference, 6'5".
No, 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 but I'm talking about...
I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
You're talking about which authority.
Did I, did I cite it correctly there?
Yeah, yeah.
Just doesn't tell you what, what classes it is.
I know. That's, that's, the first thing I looked at was special permits when, when Tom mentioned it. I says, okay, here's special permits. Okay, let's just make sure that it's us that has it. I mean, I'd hate to have you go through this and then find out you went to the wrong board.
Well, I can, I can tell you this, if we apply for a special permit, it's, you can do this on the fly. I'm not suggesting you ought to do it tonight necessarily, but if you apply for the wrong thing, and the board grants it to you, and there's no appeal filed, it's valid. You recorded it, it's over. That's what the 20 day appeal period is for.
Right.
And, I mean, I'm willing, I'm willing to take the gamble that we can apply for a special permit, because I don't think any of the special permit criteria are particularly difficult to, to meet. I understand the variance problem.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the, the setback law simply, it doesn't say we're the special permit granting authority. It simply says these are the setback regulations, and if you do something that impacts those, you're creating a non-conforming structure. And any non-conforming kind of situation is what has to come to us, and that's all it does here with the height. It just says what the height limitation is. Doesn't say who deals with it. But anytime there's a non-conforming event that's occurring, which is what's occurring here, is it falls in front of our board. So now, so I don't know...
I have to defer to the chairman on that. I don't know. I, I have to assume you're correct. I mean, I got no reason to think you aren't, but I just asked the question. It doesn't seem to define who is the special permit granting authority for such a, I mean...
No, it doesn't.
It makes sense, it's us.
No, it doesn't. You, you have, the only thing that, that, if you go back to 542, changes to non-conforming single and two family residential structures which are not authorized, those are residential structures.
Those are that.
Yeah.
Change, well, I don't know if it's a change. Yeah, all right, so it's residential. You'll cut to the planning board anyway.
Correct, yes. Correct.
So, I think they'd rather go back, the planning board can't undo what we do, so if they go back and go height approval...
We'd rather go back with your blessing, and I, I guess my thought is this, this is actually an expansion to an existing building, so there may be...
They're adding on to it.
Yeah, there may be better grounds to ask for a special permit under those circumstances than if we were building a freestanding, brand new building, and we just wanted to build it higher than was left.
And, and under the special permit provisions, I also noticed that we do have to have a recommendation from the planning board about a special permit. So I think you have to ask the planning board about their opinion about a special permit. If you wanna have your bases covered now.
Well, I, I...
That's fine.
That's fine. I mean, there, are you, do you, I mean, if we continue, it remains an open case here. And, and I, I think Bob is right. If we're not going to turn, if we're not going to agree to say, okay, listen, let's interpret this as actually an application for a special permit, let's act on it as a special permit now, if we're not gonna do that, then, then I think we might as well uphold, act on the two actions we have, uphold the building inspector, deny the application for a variance, and ask them to turn around and submit an application for a special permit with the understanding that the board will probably act favorably on a special permit that addresses the points of...
Well, no, I was gonna allow to, to amend their, their request for a variance.
Well, is that...
And go back to the planning.
Why don't we continue this the next month, and you request modification of your application? It's gonna be the same thing.
Well, it's...
We're not, we're really not gonna change the facts.
No.
We're just gonna change the ending on the application.
Right, and there's the criteria for a special permit are different, so we can go through those. Those are real complicated. That's, that's fine. We'll, we'll do that. We'll do that. I mean, I'd rather you didn't deny everything in front of you now and just...
No, we're not gonna, not gonna deny it.
Continue, vote, continue.
Not gonna vote anything tonight.
Okay, then that's what we'll do.
Well, okay, well, that's fine. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm sure you're looking at the calendar, we all look at the calendar. So that's my concern.
We are.
As applicants, for you. But they're gonna come back as, amend their application. Does that then allow us to ignore the application, so we're acting on an amended application?
No.
So we're gonna have to, we're still gonna have to vote on these things. We're gonna have to vote them on that, accept this, deny this, but accept that. You know, accept the decision of the building inspector, deny the variance, and then approve the special permit. Is that the scenario that you're thinking might play out?
You can, you can do it that way, or we'll withdraw this application completely with prejudice.
Well, that's, that's my question.
That's what I...
I would just assume to have you do that.
Right. Well, we'll, we'll... I mean, after the special permit here.
Yeah, I, I would think you'd wanna...
Because we wanna, I wanna amend, yeah.
You'd wanna amend the variance request to a special permit, so that that is not denied.
You hear only the special permit?
Right.
Right.
I think so.
We withdraw with prejudice.
And we can, and we can do it as a continuation, so we don't have to go back and re-adapt it and so forth.
Yeah, right, right. It's just a continuation. So it just, it, it just, you buy, it puts you 30 days out.
Right. So I, I think you folks should probably take a vote to allow us to do that.
We just need to vote to continue.
Well, I, I have no problem. If the applicant wants the request that we continue it and allow him to amend, I would so move. Okay, second.
I think that's the right way to take it. All right, you made that a motion.
I have.
Yes, he is.
My second.
Second. Aye.
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 Overbowed.
Thank you. Thank you. See you next month.
Yes.
I do need you to sign that, okay?
No, I know the case. None of us wrote this, this is the problem.
No, no.
the decision is prepared and reviewed at the next meeting, and that's when it's signed off. And that's, that's when it becomes eligible for the 20 day appeal period. But I agree with you, I, I, just nobody, that's the window of time that you're supposed to shoot.
Hold, I can stop the process from the planning board's house.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Will make a motion if we adjourn?
Second.
Second is, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, signify by running.